He's out. Okay, he might be watched, just so everybody knows, he might be watching. But for roll call, I guess we need a motion for Councilmember Atkinson for being excused?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Atkinson.
Second?
There's a motion by Councilmember Rosin and second by Councilmember Hornby to excuse Councilmember Atkinson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Guess what? Swearing in. This is, we have a judge. Judge Blackman, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Do you want to do it right here or do you want to do it right in front there? Where would you like to do it? Can you guys tell me where you want it? This general area? Okay. Can you tell me which side is your right? So let's be good for the picture with that right hand there. Everybody ready there? Okay, here we go. Please repeat after me and raise your right hand. I, Myra Navarro Gomez.
I, Myra Navarro Gomez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
City of Wenatchee.
City of Wenatchee.
Councilmember at large.
Councilmember at large.
Be.
Be.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You guys clap. Or maybe just fake sign again so they can see. No, not me. Okay, so this goes to you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Judge, can we get a picture with her husband also?
Sure.
You three, then maybe us four.
Sure.
That'd be great. And then, Councilmember, if you would like to say a few words, that'd be great, so.
Where do you want us?
Well, right there, right? So we can have.
You just tell me where. Okay. Is this where you want us?
Yes.
Okay. Come on in here. Where do you want it?
The one that's important, that's going to be.
Okay, then it's right in the middle. All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Oh, sure. Your Honor. You're your ear on too, you know.
Okay, so I didn't prepare an official speech or anything, but just speaking from the heart, thank you to all of you that voted for me, or more appropriately, who assigned me to this amazing opportunity. Thank you to my loving husband Frankie for supporting me in this new endeavor, and I hope that he continues to support me. I know he goes home right now to take care of soccer and kids and family, so thank you to him. And for all of you guys, thank you for this opportunity to be able to serve this amazing community. Thanks.
Now it's time for her to get to work. So, here we go. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, no time. Welcome.
Congratulations, Myra.
Thank you.
Want us over here today?
Sure.
All right, now it's going to be our citizens' comment. It's a period of applied opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. Comments on the public hearing items will be taken during that time, and there is one public hearing item. We'll limit to three minutes. Who would like to come up and give your name and address first and give us some comments? Here we go.
Good evening, Council. Alan Walker, Wenatchee resident, 620 Lewis Street. I come with a invitation for you all to take a short journey. It's an eighty-foot journey. So I have some flyers here I will leave for you, but we are doing a fundraiser for Shland Douglas Community Action Council and an opportunity for community members to rappel from the rooftop of the residence in Wenatchee. So a five-story building, about eighty feet from top to bottom, so that's the eighty-foot journey you'd be embarking on. And there's a way to get signed up. Mike knows a little bit about this. Mayor, you, we've discussed this a little bit before, Councilman Topp has heard this as well at our board meeting. So I will just hand these around. I'll leave them to Laura and she can distribute those. You can register at the community action website, just cdcac.org, and you register there to do this. You pay a registration fee, and then your job is to raise a thousand dollars to go over the edge. So.
Love that.
It's going down for good.
Yeah.
And what's the money going to be used for?
The money will be used to support Shland Douglas Community Action Council. Yes, in the work that we're doing. So there's your opportunity. You might want to challenge your seatmates across the river. So Shland County Commissioners are challenging their Douglas County counterparts. So I'll leave it up to you, Mayor, to contact Mayor Charlie Lee and say, okay, challenge is on. So there we go. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come up? Seeing nobody else, we do have a special presentation. Who do we have that's, who do we have here that's doing the presentation? Oh, got it.
This is really scary and intimidating. I wasn't supposed to do this, so.
Well, watch out, there's a detective behind you.
I don't know.
You're in good hands.
My name is Deja Strong, and I work for Special Olympics Washington. I am the Law Enforcement Tour Tron Campaign Manager. And every year, we find L E T R Law Enforcement Tour Tron volunteers and who deserve a little special shout-out. Steve has been a part of this for almost two decades, and he's never really received a big recognition, so we thought it was time. Steve's been dedicated to Special Olympics Washington for nearly two decades. As a regional coordinator, he successfully brought together law enforcement across our region, organizing polar plunges, Tepacop events, fundraisers at the Super Oval racetrack, and so much more. Known for his deep community involvement, Steve consistently places SOA's mission at the forefront of his efforts. He has been awarded Officer of the Year in his department and is widely respected as an exceptional compassionate officer in and out of uniform. His commitment to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, always working quietly behind the scenes without seeking recognition, truly makes him deserving of this award.
My name's Catherine Jackson. I'm the Executive Director of Mission Vista, and Steve Ovitt is on our board, and we're just very blessed to have him on our board. He really puts our clients first, and he helps us every day with everything that we need, making sure that they have a safe environment to live in, helping us make those day-to-day decisions that we couldn't do it without him. So it's a really big honor that he gets to do this, but also, even though when he doesn't get the honor, he's still there every day, not getting paid to help us, but really in the forefront, being on our board and helping us all the time.
Is it okay, Mr. Mayor, if we take some photos?
Yes, and your wife's out there. Maybe she should be coming in, because I know that she participates and works hard also.
You know, we need, we need a screenshot or something.
That's a really good idea.
Like a background, like. Instagram background, just like.
Squeezing air. I'd like a laugh. All right, when I say please, will you guys, will you guys say thank you, Steve? Okay? One, two, three.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
We take them to their destinations. They're awesome. Oh, man. They make my day.
Mayor, with the Florida Plunge, we can all be standing.
What's that date?
Yes, and he is signed up. However, he's quite a few dollars below me in raising funds.
Yeah, I forgot what our.
And it's, it's not too late to sign up. Or, if you do just want to come and hang out, we appreciate it. Twenty-second of February at noon.
Or they can just donate towards mine to beat you.
Give it your best shot.
We actually did have, what, three people today in one of our meetings that said something like they got signed up, or they're signing up. That was today, wasn't it?
We have several of our directors who will be plunging, including our IT director and our Public Works Director.
All right, we'll move on to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings. Approve Resolution Number 2025-06, authorize the city administrator to negotiate a settlement agreement subject to legal council approval to the resolution, to resolve the petition of condemnation in the city of Wenatchee V A M J Wenatchee LLC, Shland Superior Court Case Number 20-200334-04, and sign all settlement documents related to, related heretofore to authorize the city administrator to execute the voluntary possession and use agreement with Michelson Packing Company necessary for the construction of Confluence Parkway, Parkway Phase One, Project Number 2201.1, to approve the final contract voucher certificate for the project number 2101, Ninth Street Stormwater Retrofit Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher certificate, and to accept the work completed by the contractor KRCI LLC for the spring water improvement project, City Project Number 2007, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Uer for city council to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings. Approve Resolution Number 2025-06, authorize the city administrator to negotiate a settlement agreement subject to legal council approval to resolve the petition of condemnation in the city of Wenatchee V A M J Wenatchee LLC, Shland County Superior Court Case Number 20-2-00334-04, and sign all settlement documentations related thereto to authorize the city administrator to execute the voluntary possession and use agreement with Michelson Packaging Company necessary for the construction of Confluence Parkway Phase One Project, Project Number 2201.1, to approve the final contract voucher certificates for project number 2101, Ninth Street Stormwater Retrofit Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher certificate, and to accept the work completed by the contractor KRCI LLC for the spring water improvements project, City Project Number 2007, and authorize city administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, is Linda still on the phone?
I'm not sure. Is Linda on? Still on there? Well, we had enough ayes, so we know it's approved.
All right, sounds good.
So.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes. Thanks, Linda. Okay, we're going to go on to our action items. Mr. Erickson?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Welcome. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. So tonight, we have the Pioneer Park Pedestrian Improvement Project. We're going to request a motion to accept the low bid by Pipkin Construction, and I have a little PowerPoint, since I know at least one of you may not be familiar with the project. So real quick overview for you. So Pioneer Park is located up on 220 Fuller Streets, so just right up the block from us here, a few blocks up. It's one of our older parks, acquired in 1908 and 1919, so two separate acquisitions. A number of different amenities at that park. So we've got the city pool there, play equipment, picnic area, restrooms in the skate park. And the park itself hosts a number of events and programs, everything from Skyhawk Sports Camps all throughout the summer to the city swim meets that are their Apple Capital invitation. So it's a popular park in the summertime. A little bit about our project and a little bit about the background. So we have a six-year comprehensive plan that goes from 2024 through 2030. That plan outlines a number of goals, objectives, and strategic actions for us to accomplish. I put a couple of those up on the, up on the screen there that actually relate directly to this project, and that's to upgrade our existing parks and then also try to get as many of those parks ADA accessible as possible. In 2023, to start kind of working down that road to accomplish those goals, we did engineering to do access improvements for both Washington and Pioneer Park, and then also electrical upgrades, which isn't part of this project, but at the same time, we did engineering to do electrical upgrades to bring that up to code, those four park areas. 2024, we received budget approval for 2025 to do this project, and so then we started with the project and went out to bid. The scope of this project, so what we're trying to do, and to kind of orient you, so the drawing on the right side of the screen is sort of this area here. So this is the pool office, pool building, Russell Street's down here, Fuller Street's here. So it's really that entire corridor. So what we want to do is connect the sidewalk from Russell Street, which just stops, all the way up to the pool building, and then it continues on from there. We'd also be adding ADA parking spots to bring that up to compliance, and then internal to the park, some linking walkways to connect the restroom building, the play equipment, the skate park, to have accessible routes of travel amongst all of those elements in there. Future phases, we mentioned the undergrounding of the electrical, bringing the electrical up to code, increasing lighting for security, and then also adding a picnic shelter, which will actually go on this pad right here. So we took the project, went out to bid earlier this year, from January 2nd through the 30th. We were amazed that we got 14 competitive bids, which was awesome. Pipkin Construction was a little bitter, a little over $228,000, which is well within our budget for the project, by almost $100,000, so that's, that's even good. And so with your approval, then we move ahead with the project and hopefully have that done before the pool opens for operations this May. So it's kind of a quick project, quick turnaround, but we want to try to get done before we have all those people descending on the, on the pool area for the season. That, I'd try to answer any questions for you.
I think that's great. Really quick. Your Honor, I'll move for the city council to accept the bid from Pipkin Construction in the amount of $228,316.80 for the Pioneer Park Pedestrian Improvements Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the standard city project agreement.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Rosin and second by Councilmember Cuevas for city council to accept the bid from Pipkin Construction in the amount of $228,316.80 for the Pioneer Park Pedestrian Improvement Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the standard city project agreement. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening. Mayor, city council members, Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And tonight, first thing I have for you is, this is a temporary change application for a regional water right, specifically the Pioneer Water Right. As you may recall, we have been leasing that water right to Crown, and they've been using it at Granite Farms to irrigate in the Wall Walla area. And what this agreement would do, will it allow us to continue to lease that water right? It's not one that we're using right now, so it's being used to irrigate crops. And this would be for the 2026 through 2029 irrigation season. So we are working on additional agreements that we won't have to come back. As you'll notice from the history, we've had to come back pretty regularly, almost every year, to kind of keep this process going. This will actually be good, as I mentioned, through 2029, and we are continuing to work on agreements to allow the water to continue to be used as long as it's not needed here for drinking water. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jessica, can you just kind of talk a little bit about everything you're doing to make sure we protect our water rights and maybe just quick understanding of that?
Of course. So water rights are, it's a complicated thing. We have some wonderful attorneys that help us make sure that we are following all the right processes. We have many programs in place, like our Water Use Efficiency Program, and under the municipal water law, that helps protect our water rights because we're putting it to good use and making sure that we are continuing to develop our water system in a timely fashion. And so all of these things help protect these water rights under current state laws. So we work really hard to make sure that we continue to have ample water rights for our community today and for many years into the future.
And there's no way we're going to harm any chance of losing our water rights by doing this?
Correct.
Yes.
And the, the date period on there is very specific, too, because there are rules about how long the water can be used. And so it is very specific that 2029, there'll need to be some additional changes to continue to secure those water rights, so.
So Councilmember Navarro Gomez, just so you know, other cities and counties contact her for her advice. She's an incredible asset, and we are so fortunate to have her and her knowledge. So I'm just going to let you know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Any other questions for Jessica?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the temporary change application for the regional water right and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Uer and second by Councilmember Huer for, oh, Hornby, excuse me, for city council to approve the temporary change application for the regional water right and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You get to stay here.
I get to stay here one more time. So February 3rd, on Monday, unfortunately, there was a fire out near Holly Street. There was some many uncertainty as to what it was. Unfortunately, it was our stormwater pipe for our Holly Street outfall. It caught fire, and there was a great response by the firefighters and police officers, but it was very challenging to get that fire out because it's underground and daylight's out into the Haran area. Never heard of a pipe catching on fire before, didn't realize they were so flammable. But as you can see, the pictures in your report, it was a steel, had steel bands, and then it was completely coated in plastic, and really all that was left was just the steel band. So it was completely destroyed in that fire. So there was also difficulty in getting the fire out, because if you think it's a 66-inch pipe, so it's taller than me, and how do you get water to put it out when the whole pipe is engulfed in flames? So very challenging situation. We'll thank our emergency response folks that took care of that situation for us, and also our collections crew from our Public Works Department. They stayed, inspected the pipe, made sure things were safe so that Burlington Northern could resume train traffic after this incident. So we did requests from the mayor. Once we had inspected the pipe and discovered that it was completely destroyed, that we needed to get that fixed very promptly. It has started to cave in, but thankfully, with the colder weather, it's fairly stable. It's also in a secure area. And, but, once it starts to warm up and we have stormwater running through there, there's no pipe for the stormwater to go through. So it will, it could potentially cause quite a bit of damage. So that's where the decision came from, to be able to say, hey, we have an emergency and we need to move quickly. So we have been working with J and K Construction on getting a contract in place. They were very close. We should have that contract signed in the next day or two, and I'll be back on the 27th to bring that contract to you. The estimate at this point in time is $259,300 to replace the pipe. It's about 170 feet of pipe that we'll have to replace. And, you know, we're really lucky. Sometimes it's difficult to get parts still or pieces and stuff, so it's looking like we should have the pipe, and they should be able to start work the first week of March. So, and it'll take about three weeks, three to four weeks to be completed. So, so this resolution is just to accept that emergency declaration. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. So Jessica or Mr. Rockholder, if you can, like, explain how emergency situation works, how come we don't come to the city council first?
Yeah.
Why don't you just, I want to make us do a couple of things, just to educate as we go through.
Yeah, of course. So there are certain situations that unfortunately, we've had two in the last two months. But when there is something that is broken that could cause damage to property, that would cause our system not to function, that we could damage the environment, that creates unsafe situations, the staff go to the Public Works Director, and we brief him on that situation, and then he reaches out to the mayor and also briefs the mayor on it. And so it comes from staff. We make the recommendation with our justification as to why, and we also document all the, you know, like, we had a report that we video inspected the pipe to show how bad the damage was. And so, you know, we don't make these decisions lightly. In fact, we handle many emergencies all the time that we just go take care of. But there are times where the situation requires a contractor or is just a bigger problem than what we can handle with the crews we have. So this is, again, one of those situations where the replacement of that pipe is a much bigger project that requires a contractor to come in and assist us. And if we were to wait and follow the normal bidding processes, it would take a very long time, and in the meantime, more damage will, will occur if we don't move promptly. And another part of our decision is just that the procurement of parts, I mean, ordering the pipe can take weeks. And so if you have to wait and develop a design and bid and go through the whole normal process for projects, it just takes, takes too long, and things get, it's going to deteriorate very quickly if we don't deal with it promptly. So tonight is the resolution that you'll approve that just validates that emergency response declaration and that we can continue to move forward. And then I'll be back with the contract, and there will also be an advertisement in the paper that describes why we declared the emergency, and, and that I'll be back on the 27th to talk to you again and share the contract, and also more details about the project.
You did great.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've had a lot of experience lately.
Your Honor, I have a question for Jessica. Jessica, how long do you think it'll be before this is completely replaced? And are you using a different type of pipe to replace it?
That's a great question, Linda. Yes, we've debated that quite a bit. And, you know, the, the plastic pipe is much easier to install. It's actually about the same price, but we are going with a concrete pipe this time so that it will be not flammable. We are also taking precautions, since it is suspected that this was arson. We are going to be putting grates and closing off so that people can't get into the pipe. So two things, it won't burn and we'll limit access to it for safety. Did I answer all your questions, Linda?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yes, of course.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for a city council to approve Resolution Number 2025-07, declaring an emergency repair of the Holly Street outfall and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Uer and second by Councilmember Cuevas for city council to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, declaring an emergency repair of the Holly Street Outfall and authorize the mayor's signature. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none.
Yes, one comment?
Yes.
I just want to say, Jessica, I really appreciate you and your staff. And like you said, this is the second one in two months, and you've just, your entire department has shown how valuable they are, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda, I appreciate it.
I second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Community Development Director, Mr. De Vries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you, I have a proposed ordinance, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one, amending Sections one point oh nine, zero seven zero, thirteen, thirteen oh two oh, and Chapter sixteen twelve of the Wenatchee City Code related to the revocation, suspension, or modification of a permit, license, variance, preliminary subdivision approval, or other land use approval. These aren't new code sections that we have. What we're trying to do over time is add clarity where there's some code provisions which may appear to conflict or not be clear. We want to provide some streamlined process and transparency. And over time, our legal council is helping us do that, and we have some additional ones this year we'll probably bring before you. The situation here is that under thirteen thirteen, it provides a process, or a provisions when a revocation might be appropriate. And then in Chapter sixteen twelve, it provides a process on that. But in looking at the two, there's some lack of clarity. It speaks to the city administrator, no, not city, speaks to the administrator, which is the Community Development Director, being able to do, have decision-making authority. But then it also talks about the Code Enforcement Board having authority in the, in the process. So it's really unclear which one do you take it through? Do you have to do both? And that's really not the intent. What we'd like to do, and as proposed here, is to have a revocation go through the administrator after a process that's in the code, and then have that appeal hold to the city hearing examiner. That provides a process where matters, where that's in, sort of in our wheelhouse of land use matters, that we can review those in, in that subject matter. And then keeping that separate from the Code Enforcement Board that typically deals with nuisances and abatements. Sometimes that may overlap, where you might have both processes for a situation, but we're trying to add clarity and distinction on having the processes separate. There's also adding some clarity here on appeals, that it goes to the hearing examiner. It's already the case in there, but we wanted to add some clarity and then simplifying the judicial appeal as well, after it goes through the hearing examiner. So not a significant change, but again, we're trying to go through the code and, and approve it over time, and we appreciate the city attorney helping us out on that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
We see them and clean them up.
Correct, yes.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt Ordinance, Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, amending Sections one point zero nine, point zero seven zero, and thirteen point, uh, one three point one three point zero two zero, and Chapter sixteen point twelve of the Wenatchee City Code related to the revocation, suspension, or modification of a permit, license, variance, preliminary subdivision approval, or other land use approval.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Rose Stein and second by Councilmember Hornby for city council to adopt Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, amending Section one point zero nine, point zero seven zero, and thirteen point thirteen point zero two zero, and Chapter sixteen point twelve of the Wenatchee City Code related to the revocation, suspension, or modification of a, of a permit, license, variance, preliminary subdivision approval, or other land use approval. Any discussion or comments?
Just that this was also reviewed by a Public Services Committee.
That's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Not Steven, but we're, okay, so it's time for our public hearing, though.
That's correct, yes.
So at this time, I call the public hearing order. It's concerning the twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. We'll have staff, will first give a report, followed by then by public testimony. We're going to just ask the speakers to come up to the microphone, state your name and address. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body and should not be of personal nature. Public testimony may be limited to three minutes, and it will be limited to three minutes unless further time is granted. Three minutes should be good. If there are a large number of speakers, which I don't think we have too many large numbers of speakers. Okay, Glenn, I think we're ready.
Great. So we are an entitlement community from, we receive funds annually from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under Community Development Block Grant Program. And every year, we adopt an annual action plan that says how we're going to spend those funds. And then that's adopted into our capital facility plan and our comprehensive plan, as well as our transportation improvement plan, because the direction that the council's chosen for the use of these funds is for infrastructure. So this year, that occurred, we had three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents that we had to spend, and if you miss that ten cents, we have to go back and amend things with HUD, believe it or not. So we did spend those funds on improvements to First Street Corridor and sidewalk repairs. And then what happens after you spend those funds is we're required to have a second hearing, and that's what we have tonight. And that, the purpose of that hearing is to say that, yes, we did spend those funds on that project, and simply the action item that we're looking for is to accept the twenty twenty-three CDBG caper, which says we did spend these funds on that improvement. If I, if we don't receive and accept on that, then we're out of compliance with the Community Development Block Grant Program. So it's just a requirement we have to do every year after we spend the money. Any questions?
Any other staff? You're it?
I am it, yes.
Okay, so if there's not any other questions, we'll ask the public, give them a chance to come up regarding this hearing matter. Seeing none. Turn it back over to the council.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to accept the twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Uer for city council to accept the twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Fun, furious, get things done, quick meeting. Mayor's report, we went over to Olympia. I'm gonna actually ask our city administrator to talk on my behalf, if you wouldn't mind, since she helps me a lot.
Free rein?
Limited to three minutes.
Happy to, thank you. So a couple of things, just to wrap up the last couple of weeks' events. The housing summit that the city supported that was put on by Our Valley, Our Future, was a huge success, it was sold out. Our community development team was a huge support in that, and I also wanted to give a big shout out to Mia Brettz, who put together an amazing video that we saw today with directors on kind of housing and the future of our housing. You should have all received, or will be receiving, invites to the Confluence Parkway Phase One Groundbreaking on March twenty-first, so please save the date. We'll be out at the North Wenatchee property and turning some dirt. As was mentioned earlier, the Special Olympics Polar Plunge is next week on the twenty-second. The mayor's fundraising, as well as a couple of other teams, so you can see them if you go to Special Olympics website, as well as there's the opening ceremonies and lots of other events that need support and volunteers. Happy to send the links for that information if you're interested. And last but not least, we are still collecting surveys for the comprehensive plan. So if you have networks and, and other organizations that you can share that with to take the survey to provide input, it's open through mid-March. And again, happy to share that link if you would like it, or if it's on our, it's on our Facebook and website. And that's about it.
That was the best mayor's report ever.
Under three, under three minutes.
Yeah, and under three minutes. Want to start with you, Councilmember Cuevas?
I have nothing, but I'm, I'm just gonna say that I'm gonna get together with staff so we can spread the word for the, the survey that we're gonna be doing for the twenty-year comprehensive plan. Are we talking with the Hispanic community so that they can hear their voice?
Great.
Let's see, we had Public Services meeting, which was great. Loved hearing all the, all the details. I love coming to this meeting fully already prepared before I even walk in the door. It was great. And again, just kudos for all the work. That was two emergencies in a very short period of time, and you guys handled it beautifully, so thank you for that. Other than that, just busy season, we have our annual banquet coming up for the chamber. A lot of you are registered to come, so thank you and look forward to seeing you there. That's about it.
Perfect.
Yesterday, we had a Community Action Council Board meeting. Welcome Sheriff Morrison as a new board member, so it's gonna, I think he's gonna be a great addition. Mr. Walker told you about the over-the-edge, repelling fundraiser, which I, I can't wait to see some, some of y'all come off a building. But other than that, there's also Empty Bowls, February twenty-first at PiBis, fundraiser for them, where you can paint ceramics and, and then also in the city at the, the college, there, the, there's accepting applications for a new program, a bachelor's program for behavioral health, which needs AA requirement, but it's a new program where you can get your bachelor's right here at Wenatchee Valley College.
That's exciting.
Yep.
Most of my stuff was at the WDA, so there's a WDA dinner coming up. It's down at PiBis Market again. It's supposed to be a schwanky one, I hear, so please come, be prepared to have a good time. Also, the WDA got a new vice chair, so that's exciting news. Josh from Norwood is the new vice chair for the WDA. Be assumptive chair when Josh Tar steps down in a year. Exciting stuff.
So Councilmember Navarro Gomez, we, we, I know you're gonna get introduced, like, each department kind of have a sit-down, and I know they're working on that with you. And then, and the idea is to kind of then feel what committees might be good. We are gonna ask you to be on the Finance Committee. That'll meet, I think, once or twice a month. And, but then, the, the goal here is to see where your comfort level is and to, and to reach out to our city administrator, myself, and say, hey, you know, I'm kind of interested in this, this interesting, I know education. So anyway, so that's kind of how, how we'll go through this, and we just want you to take one step at a time. And, boy, you already got all the tons of knowledge, so we'll be learning from you.
You're too kind.
We're gonna be learning from you, too, so this'll be good.
I'm excited.
Your Honor, would you, I have a report for you.
I feel, I always feel bad, because I, because I don't see you, Councilmember Harold. I forget about you, so I'm apologized, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, I'm shocked. Anyway, Councilmember Rose Stein and Hornby, if you haven't turned in your applications yet, from the salad, they are due a bit for a second.
Thank you.
Please do so, and I'm hoping you're still going. And, oh, there's one other name. Oh, I will be out of town this week, or next week, I will be at City Action Days. And just a plug for the conference coming up in June. Charlie went last year, he felt he got a lot out of it. Councilmember Navarro, I hope you will consider going, because you will learn a lot, and it's really an amazing conference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Let's see. We need a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Second. It was quick. Motion by Councilmember Hornby and seconded by two, but I'm gonna give it to Councilmember Cuevas to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.